Call meeting, you already stand for the pledge, please.
Come on here, honey. You miss your honey.
I'd like to welcome Mayor Bob Knight, Mayor Northeast, with us this evening. Thank you. Okay, can I get the motion to accept amendments of October 5?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the meeting on October 5.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion to accept the financial report and payment bills.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Have a budget amendment, Steve?
Yes, I do. The first budget amendment is number 2012 dash zero zero two. It's a budget $2,800 on the fund balance into the mayor commissioner's missing expense account for the purchase of glass mugs commemorating the town's 225th anniversary.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept budget amendment 2012 dash zero zero two?
If that's it, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Second budget amendment is number 2012 dash zero zero three. It's a budget $2,286 from the seed fund account into the lease capital account for the purchase of two metro count traffic counting devices and related accessories.
The motion to accept 2012 zero zero three budget amendment.
I'll make a motion to accept budget number 2012 dash zero zero three.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. You got a couple of minutes to do, you mind do that one of yours real quick?
What do you do, the ethics or you want to?
Yeah, the ethics one probably be good, let me get that out of the way.
The ordinance four 2011 Code of Ethics for the Town of Elkhorn was adopted in pursuant to the General Assembly's passing of Senate Bill 315 in 2010. The state will inquire what towns have an equivalent ethics ordinance to the state, of course, to town and county for that. And the town used a model ordinance by the State Ethic Commission to develop ordinance four dash 2011. I would ask, it was introduced on the 21st, so I need to move to the topic tonight.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept ordinance four twenty dash eleven as amended?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay.
Do the ethics real quick?
Aye.
Lewis, could you speak up a little bit, please?
Yes. Annexation eight three 2011 is for the Bell Hill LLC parcel at 189 Bell Hill Lane, or Bell Hill Road. It's 27 acre commercial property, was initially petitioned for annexation on July, I mean January 20, 2010. However, due to a number of factors, the town did not act on resolution substantive public hearing held at that time. Since the Artesian Water Maryland, Waste Water Maryland has relinquished its sewer franchise in Cecil County, opens the opportunity for the town to provide sewer to the 27 acre parcel. Constantly I'd ask that the board accept annexation resolution eight three 2011 for the annexation of that parcel. Advertised for four weeks and had the public hearing on December 7.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept annexation resolution eight three dash 2011 for introduction purposes only?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. All right, at this time we open up for public hearing for ordinance five twenty dash eleven, water and sewer rate adjustment. But first, we will have a presentation by municipal financial group. Give us a little more information for everybody.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. We have a brief update on the presentation we gave in the past reflecting the latest data that you've received. We're here to talk about water and sewer rates. To give you an appraisal of what is really going to cost to provide water and sewer service. And based upon the amount of water you expect to sell, the amount of sewage expected to be treated, what you need to charge to cover those costs. The intention is not to make a profit, but to break even on a cash basis. So my colleague Tracy did a lot of the analytical work, so she's going to do most of the presenting with me jumping in with comments.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. So when we first did the-
Just pull the mic in front of your voice.
Can you hear me now? As of June 2010, we had recommended a four-year financial plan for your water and sewer rate increases. In fiscal year 11, we had recommended a 30% increase on your water rates and a 10% increase on your sewer rates. Since then, the town had implemented those increases, however, they hadn't been implemented until the 12, 1, 2010 billing cycle. So you did not receive those increased revenues for the entire year in fiscal year 11. There also, the second big change that's happened since then is the Artesian water costs have gone up significantly. You will be purchasing 375,000 gallons per day instead of the 50,000 gallons per day, which is more than a 600% increase with the cost associated with the Artesian water purchase. So to go through what that does to your revenue requirements, we just want to go through those building blocks one more time. And we're going to start with that main building block, your operating and maintenance expenses, which are your day-to-day operating expenses. Then going to add on any outstanding debt you have, a planned capital improvement program, and any contributions to reserves we would recommend. Those would equal your annual revenue requirements. And when we compare those to the current revenues you are collecting with your current customer base, we would see what the revenue adequacy would be for the Town of Elkhorn. So starting with that first building block, your O&M expenses. For fiscal year 12, your water O&M budget is $2.78 million. We have them broken down into your six different classes that you put your costs into, including source of supply, which includes that Artesian water purchase, pumping, water treatment, transmission and distribution, customer accounting, and administrative and general costs. So then when we move on to sewer, there's three categories that the sewer fiscal year 12 budget is broken into, including wastewater treatment and disposal, transmission and administrative in general. And in fiscal year 12, your sewer budget is $3.53 million for fiscal year 12. When we take that through our planning period, we will be using a 3% inflation rate for the planning period for your water and sewer O&M expenses. So then we come to one of the first reserves that we would recommend, and that's an operating and maintenance reserve. What this reserve does is it serves as a working capital. And we normally recommend 90 days of your O&M budget to be the balance of that, the target balance of that reserve. That's what PSC requires for investor-owned utilities, so that's why we use that, it's an industry standard. Target balances for the water fund would be $720,000 and $890,000 for the sewer fund. When necessary, we cap what contribution should be made to each fund at $100,000 a year to mitigate some rate shock to your customers. We wouldn't expect you to be putting in almost a million dollars in that first year of your O&M reserve, so it is capped at $100,000 per year when necessary. Moving on to that second building block is your existing debt service. Currently, the water fund has no existing debt service, and the sewer fund is made up of two bond issuance right now, which is the wastewater treatment plant, BNR ENR upgrade and expansion, and the WQS RF. There are level payments of about $1.2 million for the planning period, and they include principal interest and administrative fees within those payments every year. The next building block, we don't have a slide for because there currently is no plan CIP. So there is no cash-funded capital projects within the budget or any projected debt we have listed in our model. So that brings us to our second and final reserve that we would recommend, as since you don't have a capital improvement plan, this is even more important because it is the repair, replacement, and rehabilitation reserve. So this is how you can fund replacing the current system and not making sure that those big main breaks happen, and you have no money for it. So we took this at a high level, and we recommend a percentage of the useful life of your assets. Again, to mitigate rate shock, we only are, we are only recommending 0.5% in fiscal year 10, ramping that up to 0.75% of your total book value of your system assets to be put into that reserve. And eventually, hopefully, to get to 1% per year by fiscal year 17. Now, if you're putting in 1% of your book value of your assets, that means it's a 100-year life cycle to replace all of your assets if you kept going with that. So bringing all those building blocks together, we see the water revenue requirements in total from fiscal year 11 through fiscal year 15. We take those total revenue requirements of $2.7 million in fiscal year 11. We less out any miscellaneous other revenues, which would include rentals, or late fees, or shut-off payments that were paid. And we achieve the net revenue requirements that are needed from rates. So in fiscal year 11, that comes to $2.63 million, and that grows to $3.31 million by fiscal year 15. On the sewer side, we do the same thing, we have each building block listed. You can see that because the sewer fund has a more healthy cash balance, we aren't recommending any additional operating reserve that's in that second line of data right there. But we do have the 3R reserve amount in that we are recommending that for the planning period. So total revenue requirements for the sewer fund in fiscal year 11 are a little under $5 million, and they grow to $5.48 million by fiscal year 15. We again less out all your miscellaneous revenues and achieve what revenue requirements need to be collected from your rates and your current users, which is $4.89 million, growing to $5.42 million. So taking that and putting it into a financial plan. Fiscal year 11 is already over, so we cannot increase rates for fiscal year 11 anymore. So that's not applicable. So if we just went with a break-even increase for your rates, to break even from your revenue requirements, and comparing that to the revenues you're currently collecting from your current customer base, you would need a 53.6% increase in fiscal year 11 on the water side. You would then need an additional 5.7 in fiscal year 13, an additional 6.9, an additional 6.6 million dollar, uh, percent, excuse me, rate increase. What the financial plan does is, is we would normally try to smooth it over, however, to not let your cash balance go negative in the water fund, we need to increase rates by 57.5% in that first year, so you don't have a deficit within your water fund. And then we would recommend 3% increases for the rest of that planning period. On the sewer side, in fiscal year 12, you would need a 15.7% increase to break even. However, since the sewer fund is a little more healthy than the water fund, we can smooth out those increases over the time period, and we're recommending 10% in fiscal year 12, lessening to 5, 4, and 3% in those preceding years. Are there any questions so far? Feel free to interrupt whenever you have questions. So what does that do to your current rate structure? In fiscal year 12, those quarterly fixed charges for your in-town customers on the water side would increase from $25.16 to $39.62. On the sewer side, they would increase from $62.87 to $69.15. We also have listed out-of-town fees as well as the usage charges. We have three blocks listed. Also, just to mention that 9,000 gallons of water is included within those fixed charges. So they're increasing by that 57.5% on the water side and that 10% on the sewer side in fiscal year 12. Comparing that to what your current customer situation looks like. We took actual fiscal year 09 customer data and we analyzed it. You currently have 6,877 units of customers, which have been broken down into seven main classes. You have your single unit accounts, your multi-unit accounts, in-town and out-of-town. You also have some water-only accounts. 78% of your units are within that in-town water and sewer single unit account, and they also make up 84% of the water consumption. They made up 84% in fiscal year 09. And you sold 470 million gallons of water in fiscal year 09. Looking on the sewer side, we have it broken down into five main classes. You have, again, that in-town water and sewer single unit account is the majority of where your customers lie. 79% of them lie there on the sewer side, and 88% of the sewer usage lies within that. You had 452 million gallons of sewage treated, and totaled 6,780 sewer accounts in fiscal year 9. You see there listed those sewer-only flat-rate customers. They have an assumed usage of 9,000 gallons per quarter, which is the minimum charge. So when we look at a breakdown of how your customers are using, we try to make it so that the percentages were spread out evenly. So 8% of that, the largest customer class, uses 0 to 3,000 gallons per month. And 43% fall within that minimum charge where 9,000 gallons or less would be used, just an FYI. So you can see in-town water, out-of-town water, in-town sewer and out-of-town sewer, what percentage of customers fall where. 2% of your out-of-town sewer customers use over 30,000 gallons per quarter, and this is quarterly, excuse me. And approximately 3 to 5% use in the other categories. So looking at what it does to some sample bills, moving on to the next slide. This is for your in-town customers. This is a water and sewer bill. This is a combined bill. So as I stated earlier, that those three bills at first are all within that minimum charge, so they're all going to be increasing the same amount. They're going to be increasing $20.75 if you're using 9,000 gallons or less, which is about 23 cents a day, putting it on a daily scale. And then the other customer classes would be increasing, that 5% of customers that fall in the highest class, we use 50,000 gallons as an example for you to see. So their current bill would increase $117, which is about $1.30 a day. On the out-of-town side, we did the same thing, we used the same sample usages. So those increases are also shown, and I'll mention, as I did on the previous slide, that the $41.50 is about 46 cents a day. And the largest bill increase is about $2.61 a day for that 50,000 gallon out-of-town user with the increases we're proposing for fiscal year 12. And as I mentioned earlier, if we go to the next slide, you see that cash flow under your financial plan. The water fund, in fiscal year 11, the beginning year cash balance is approximately $600,000. However, when you have that shortfall of $960,000 because of those missed increases in revenues and the increased cost from Artesian water, you do have a deficit in your water fund that just can't be avoided of $230,000. When we carry that over to fiscal year 12, just so that end line, that water fund balance doesn't go negative, that's why we've increased it that 59%. On the sewer side, we see, again, the comparison of your net revenue requirements that we had shown you earlier, along with the revenues under the financial plan with that 10% increase in 5 and 4 and 3, and what the ending year cash balance would be for your sewer fund every year. So I'd be happy to take any questions or anything you need me to explain further. Sorry if I went really fast.
No, it's fine. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. There's some seats up front, if, um, if you'd like to come up and sit up front. There. Okay. Seats right there, Becky. They can sit up front a little.
We just want to know if we can ask them a question.
You want to ask questions?
Yes.
I can answer them for you.
I want to know what we're supposed to do when we live in, where I live, at 158 Main Street, a senior place, and we have cancer or something of a hole, and goes to the bathroom lot. We supposed to flush toilets? Is that okay with you, senior saying, and putting a sound?
Becky.
Four people.
Becky.
I'm talking.
Give me a direct question, please.
I'm talking, thanks. What do we, buddy, do now? One trash toilet, and I do nothing, and I take a bath? Then I trash? Is that what you want, evidently?
Becky, okay.
Ma'am, our job is to tell you what costs to provide water service and sewer service. We're not the welfare department or social services.
That's right.
I don't belong to the welfare place.
I'm not suggesting-
No, it's not. A good idea for you.
Becky, okay, that's it. They can't answer those kind of questions, just give the financial rate. So we'll have a public hearing, and the people will be able to speak. All right, so, great. All right, we appreciate your presentation, and then we'll have some comments from the audience. Okay? Yeah. Thank you. Is anybody had an opportunity to sign in? All right, what I'll do, I'll just go down through this list right now, but I have anybody that think it's signed in, we'll have them right after them, you can speak.
There's more sheets out there that have signed in right now. There's more out there if they didn't sign in.
Oh, okay. All right, John, of course, this is a public hearing now, and then we're just here this evening to listen to your comments and ideas and sort of suggestions. And then we'll take all consideration and we'll make a decision at a later time. John Neto? Neto? And just when you come up, just state your name and address for the record. And you will have five minutes to speak, and Mr. George will let you know when your time is up.
All right, I will, I will be quick. I did have a couple of questions on the, on the presentation. I see-
Name and address, please, sir.
I'm sorry. John Neto, 505 Blue Ball Road, Elkhorn, 21921.
Thank you.
Okay. Second page of the presentation. I see absent is the, the dollar value to the Artesian water cost, water cost increase is not on there. So for some reason or another, it was not put on there. I don't know why. If you're going to prepare this, you should tell us what that value is, so that we can take a look at the numbers for ourselves. I see that the page three lists out the, the building blocks that they've assembled to, to equal up in the end to their revenue adequacy. What I'm not hearing is, from, I guess, them or any other point, they're making assumptions about what you're going to be moving forward for, for dollars. What I would like to start hearing is what's already been done or what's going to be done to keep some of the expenses that are controllable within the water and sewer departments, what's going to be done to control those. So we're going to implement better technology, are we going to take some salary deferrals, are we going to lay some people off? What are we going to do to make sure we keep those rates low? Just a, increasing them in perpetuity is not going to be an option for, for us as business customers. So we can't do that as a business, and we really don't expect our elected officials to be able to just maintain that type of approach to just keep raising rates every time. So we have to be able to implement some level of fiscal responsibility. There's a whole bunch of things in here, and I won't get to in five minutes, but as, as we get through, a whole bunch of assumptions were made in their presentation on how to come up with these revenue projections and what you're going to need. I understood them to, when they put the repair, replacement, and rehab numbers together, they're using a 1% allocation. You haven't been using that. It looks, it looks like previously you've been using bond issues to finance your capital. Is that a practice that you're going to discontinue? Or you're going to take money for capital improvement out of the rates and then also issue bonds? So that would be a question for me. And it is, you know, I, do you have a capital plan for either the wastewater treatment process or the water production facility in place? Hearing, you know, I guess I'm not going to get answers, but if you don't, that's another thing that's hugely irresponsible for anybody to not have a plan going forward at least 10 years for capital improvements and, and a way to finance it. Just a couple of other things, pretty quickly. Tribe Industrial Park has been around for quite some time. We are right on the edge of, of the town. Part of the park is in, within town limits, part of the park is not within town limits. We find it difficult to believe that being one block out of town limits is going to get us double the rate. We're having trouble comprehending that. And I guess, lastly, I'm wondering why you went to a New York firm to develop all of this? Is nobody in the water department or the sewer department capable of producing a capital plan or a budget or projections for?
They're not from New York, they're from Annapolis.
Were they from Annapolis? Okay. Whatever we're from. We don't have internal resources to produce something like this. I guess all of these questions, we'll have to take a look at as we move forward. That's it for me, thank you.
Joe Miller?
I'm not used to speaking publicly, so you'll have to excuse me. I'm just saying that my husband and I are-
Will you put the mic over a little bit, just, there you go.
My husband and I are on a fixed income.
Name and address, please.
Our incomes are not going up any at all.
Ma'am, could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Coming down.
Just state your name and address.
My name is Josephine Miller, I live at 136 Hearthstone Drive, Elkhorn. And I worked at a food pantry yesterday, and a young lady come in there asking for, not food, but asking for money to pay her utilities. Now, they're going, talking about putting a rate increase. If this woman can't pay her utilities now, how's she going to pay them when they go sky-high? You know, this is a bad situation. I mean, I, I expect some increases, but not a, a large amount like you're talking about. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Donna Lakeman?
Donna Lakeman, 5 Joseph Gallagher Street, Elkhorn, Maryland. Mayor Fasano, Commissioners Givens, Pineau, Jabonski, and Hicks. Appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I feel it's my civic responsibility. Monday, I received a call about this meeting, and on Tuesday, I walked door to door again to put notices on everyone's house in Holly Hall. And I want to thank all the people that came here tonight from Holly Hall to support us. And I want to thank all the people that came here tonight from Holly Hall to support us. Now to the matter at hand. This increase is, is significant. Water at a rate of 57 and a half percent and sewer 10 percent? Let me repeat that. 57 and a half percent for water and 10 percent for sewer. Does anybody have a pay increase to match that? I printed out, and I, and I noticed it was in the back, the ordinance, and it says, "Water and sewer rates. Adjusting the water and sewer rates for customers of the town of Elkton to ensure sufficient revenue to pay for water and wastewater system operations, capital improvements, debt service, and purchase of water from other utilities." Water and wastewater systems operations, I can understand with maintenance. I can understand an increase, just as this lady before me said. We all can understand that. Everything's going up. Capital improvement, it's my understanding that this fund is for emergencies. That fund should be building up. It, it should be building up. Debt services, grants and loans. Now, my son got a grant for college, he don't pay that back. I understand this is a rolling block grant. Again, I think it's meant to be paid back in a short amount of time, so that it can be rolled over to use for another city. Not good for homeowners, again. Purchase of water from other utilities. Artesian water seems to be a nightmare, and something, again, that's going to end up falling back to the responsibilities of the town of Elkton homeowners. That all costs money. Holly Hall, double the rate. You do this because you can, not because you want to adjust. It's because it's written, and no one just thinks that we should change that, especially with the significant amount of increase that you're talking about. I've received many calls. One in particular was from Scott and Chrissy Cassidy that live on 20 Walter Bolden. Scott works and couldn't make it tonight, and his wife doesn't have a vehicle to get to this meeting and is home with her children. He's the only one working in their family, and said to me, "Donna, everything's going up. Water, sewer, electric, trash, food, and gas. How am I going to make it? And how am I going to try to put a roof over the head and food for my family?" And again, you want to raise the rate of water 57 and a half percent and sewer 10. Not good for the Elkton homeowner. I do not approve of this significant water and sewer rate increase differential for Elkton residents. How are you going to get blood out of a stone? There's got to be different avenues to look at, and, you know, to make this increase not as high. Seriously, there's got to be another way. I don't approve, again, of this significant water and sewer rate increase differential for all residents. And I thank you for this opportunity to give me, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you, ma'am. Ronald Bedwell?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Okay, my name's Ronald Bedwell. I live at 19 Joseph Gallagher Street, Elkton, Maryland. And, and I do not approve this significant water and sewer increase for different out-of-town residents. Just like Donna said, it's just way too much. Way too much. My water bill now, I pay $300 every three months. What's it going to be then? I'm retired. I'm going to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Tom Flynn?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners. Tom Flynn, P. Box 434, Elkton, Maryland, 21921. We are in the management of rental property in Elkton service area. We forward our water and sewer bills to all of our residents. It's not a claim to the rent. There are some bills, here are some bills from, uh, town Elkton currently. These are just a few of them. Mostly, these are just out-of-town service areas. $587.99. Now, these are just a few. I'm very concerned with our residents affording these bills, let alone after you put these increases in. I've gone around, every time these water bills come out, I go around checking for leaks constantly. I'm in a house to check for leaks. 90 percent of the time, it's a toilet. I've installed water-saving toilet flushers, showerheads, water-saving showerheads, faucet irrigators that restrict the flow. I've, I've, I've looked, and a lot of these houses, I've already been through the houses, and these bills are high now. What are they going to do after the increases? Is there any way to shorten the billing period? Three months to get a bill, a month to pay it, no, not one month, two months. I'll give you two months to pay it, five months before anything's done. I think we need to just have quicker billing periods. I know it's going to be more reading meters, sending out bills. I don't know, I don't, I just really don't understand how people are going to afford this at a three-month increment. You need monthly, bi-monthly, something to make it affordable. No one, no one can budget for this. $600 water bills. It's just too high now. Thank you.
Mr. Littenberg?
Bob Littenberg, 105 Warren Lane, Elkton. There's been some questions asked here tonight, and nobody's answered any of the questions. I think it's a public hearing. If somebody asks a question, you should get an answer from the board or from somebody. Did you ever get any, I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, did you ever get any feedback from United about the cost of water?
Not as of yet.
Not as of yet. Well, Mr. George stated on numerous occasions that United wasn't licensed in Maryland. Is that correct, Mr. George?
They're not a regulated utility in Maryland.
Okay. Well, why, if they're not regulated a utility in Maryland, why is the town asking them to give them a price on water? I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor. You're, you're the mayor, this is your budget. This is your increase.
Because they can. If they can work it from Delaware to Maryland, we can have a reciprocal thing.
Okay, well, it's been stated by a contractor that he's getting water, will be getting water from them, at half the price we're paying for United. Am I correct, Mr. George?
You're talking about the cost of, of United versus Artesian?
Yes.
The, 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 the sale rate from Artesian.
All right, in other words, can't think of his name now, but Adam O'Malley Lane, he's made statements before you, boards your workshops, that he can get water for half the price you're being charged. Do you remember that at your workshops? Am I right or not? Okay. I think this whole thing right now has come right back to the fact that you signed contracts several years ago with United Water that you didn't realize what you were signing. Or Artesian, I'm sorry, United, Artesian. And was that correct? Is that correct? The clause that was in the contract that you signed, all of you, some of you weren't on the board at the time, that was signed, that gave them the right, after the 50,000 gallons that the MDA required that you had to have in surplus every day, had to have that in surplus. Then the clause, when you had a drought that nobody, none of you knew about, but it was classified as a drought, started drawing water, and all of a sudden this clause kicked in for 350,000 gallons, which is 300,000 over, above what you were mandated to supply. Am I correct? Okay. Well, it looks to me like I stated at the last town meeting, I think when you get any other contracts you get involved in, you better get somebody with better expertise than you've got here at this board, right here, to read your contracts and advise you on, on these contracts. I don't think any of you, if you read a contract in your mortgages that you had, that had a clause in that, you wouldn't have signed it. You would not have signed it. But water is an expertise that Diane Taylor has, and I, I didn't mean to, last meeting when I mentioned Mr. Piner and, and Mr. Givens, about their expertise negotiating with her, about Earl with sports, she wouldn't know what Earl was talking about. Same way with Charlie, when Charlie's talking about education, she wouldn't know what, what he was talking about. But when it comes to water and selling it, she's very good at it, and she uses it very, very well. That's her business. A lot of these people are on fixed incomes. I'm on fixed income, but fortunately I can afford the increase. I don't like the increase, but I know I'm going to have to pay it. But there's people on Social Security that are barely living in this town right now. A lot of them are being subsidized by Section 8. And I don't see how they're going to be doing. There's guys right here now, back here, that own properties, and we talked to some today, that they've got tenants in there that are barely making it now, and they're paying their water rates. I don't know what the answer is, but there's got to be a way of coming around this somehow in order to, in order to reduce these rates as, as they are. You can put charts up here all you want as to how you came to that conclusion, but it comes down to one thing. The town is being raped as far as the water charge is being concerned from Artesian water. Thank you.
George Blevins, is it? This is 505 Elkton Boulevard, or Blue Ball Road? Don Nicholson?
I would, would draw my request to speak. Thank you.
Okay.
Like someone by the name of Casper?
Casper? Dave Cooper?
Dave Cooper, 109 Bywood Road, Elkton. That's the Thompson Steeds Development. Actually, I don't know how I got on the list. I didn't sign anything, but I wanted to be on the list, so it worked out. Somebody must have signed me up. First of all, you know, I don't have much to say, other than I never understood in 24 years of living at Thompson Steeds, why I can see town limits all around me, the one particular strip I'm in is county, and I pay double the rate. I never understood that. I don't think it's fair. I don't know what the answer to that is, other than, you know, I think I've paid over the years overly inflated rates. In my hand, I'm holding the second highest water bill I've ever got in my life, and I haven't paid it yet. And to be honest with you, I'll pay it, because I got to. I'm responsible for it. If the bills keep going up, I don't know. One thing I would like to suggest is that these rates do pass, and they do go up, at least. I'm working. I, I'll, I'll be okay. But like a senior citizen, they ain't got a chance. Someone on a fixed income, they ain't never going to make it. Cut them a break. I'll pay extra for that, if I have to, you know? Spread it out that way. But I don't know what to say, other than all the charts you put up, and the people you paid to do them. I think a study needs to be done, what's going to happen when people aren't paying these bills, because there's going to be a lot of people ain't going to be paying. You'll just shut it off. I don't know what else to say. I just don't think it's fair. And that's all I can say. Thank you.
Okay, now, does anybody that did not get a chance to sign in that would like to speak?
Jim Nellma, 106 Park Town Drive. For the past five years, my water and sewer bill has doubled, primarily because of the double-digit sewer rate increase to fund the new water treatment facility. This has been difficult to deal with, but it is necessary in order to comply with the state mandated regulations regarding the water treatment facility. This, this rationale for, for these past increases for the past five years, the 60 percent whatever increases in the sewer rate, contrasts sharply with the rationale for the current proposed 57 percent increase in the water. The rationale for this increase, proposed increase, is a clause in the contract that should never have been signed, that triggers a forced purchase of water, much of which the town doesn't need, when a drought has been declared. The alleged drought that supposedly occurred in August and September of 2010, I don't believe there was any public awareness of that drought made. I saw nothing in the wig, there was no cautionary things about no watering of grass, no, no washing of cars, et cetera. The declaration of the drought is very important, because it immediately triggers the obligation of the town to purchase far more water than it needs, and for the residents to pay for it. It dawned on me recently, when I got a bill from the Washington Suburban Sanitation Commission, which is the primary water provider for Montgomery and Prince George's Counties, those suburban counties outside DC. For a small ranch house, the identical size virtually of my house here in Elkton, where I've lived for the past 24 years. I inherited this house from my father a few years ago, it's in College Park, Maryland. I looked at the rates on this, and I started comparing what I was paying here in Elkton for the virtually same amount of water as I'm, as I would pay in College Park, again through Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission. Here are, here's the breakdown. My current quarterly bill from Elkton for 4,800, 4,800 gallons of use, I'm single, live at, single in a small, in a small ranch house, is $95.61. The same quarterly bill from the Washington Suburban Sanitation Commission for 5,000 gallons is $47.50. Therefore, I'm paying two times as much here in Elkton for the same amount of water as I was, as I would pay down in College Park. Why the difference? There's two things operating here. One is, the sewer rates in Elkton are extremely high. The, the current rate in Montgomery County and Prince George's County is 447 per 1,000 gallons of use. In Elkton, it's $6.99 for the exact same amount of water, or a difference of $2.52 per 1,000 gallons. The proposed 10 percent increase will take this an additional 70 cents to $7.69 per thousand, thousand gallons, or a difference of $3.22 additional cost to the residents of Elkton beyond what Montgomery and Prince George's Counties currently pay. The proposed water rate of 57 percent increase will increase the rate in Elkton to $4.40 per thousand gallons, from the current rate of $2.80. This is a dollar and 60 cents increase. Again, this is higher than the 346 that Montgomery County and PG County are charged for the same amount of water. Again, this is almost a dollar more per thousand gallons of use. Let's put this in context. Montgomery County and PG County are wealthy counties, particularly in Montgomery. As I'm sure you're aware, and our audience is aware, Montgomery County is the wealthiest county in the state of Maryland. It's the eighth wealthiest county in this, in the whole country. It's home to many millionaires and several billionaires. Bill Marriott, chairman of Marriott Corporation. Dan Snyder, owner, owner of the Washington Redskins. Ted Lerner, owner of the Washington Nationals baseball team. This is the kind of wealth that's concentrated there. They're paying less than for their water and sewer than we're paying here in Elkton. How does that make any sense? The median family income in Montgomery County is $93,774. In Cecil County, it's $60,543, a difference of $33,231. That's a substantial difference. The bottom line is, the area around DC, the Maryland suburbs there, Montgomery and PG are wealthy areas. They have a very high cost of living, one of the highest in the United States. This affluence and wealth is generated, generated by all the well-paying jobs from the federal government, the federal government contractors, biotech and technology industries that surround the area. Contrast that with a rural area like Elkton. Much lower standard of living, much higher unemployment rates. You would think that the cost of basic utilities like water and sewer would be much cheaper in a place like Elkton than, than it would be in the DC metro area, but that's not the case. As I said, it's twice as much, it costs me twice as much here in Elkton as it, as it does in the DC suburbs. As I, as I've demonstrated, this, this, excuse me, that, that part doesn't come in. How does one make any sense of this? Where's the equity in this? I have to pay double more than, pay double for what the same utility here... I have to pay double more than, pay double for what the same utility here in Elton as I would in Montgomery County. This disparity will only increase when these proposed rate hikes take effect. The other issue that I have here is the 9K minimum usage fee. I use three-quarters of the year only 25% of the water that I'm charged for, so roughly 2,200 to 2,500 gallons. For the fourth, for the remaining quarter in the summer, I use about half of what I'm charged for. So I'm charged regularly for water that I'm not using. Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission doesn't charge a minimum take like that. So that, the minimum take of 9,000 gallons plus the super-high sewer rates are what leads to the very high cost currently, aside from any kind of additional increases that would be brought to bear. Just like the town of Elton is being charged by Artesian for water that it won't need or use based on the clause that's triggered by this declaration of a drought, I'm being charged for water that I don't need or won't use. Again, where is the fairness like in that? I believe that there's an inherent discrimination against single older residents like myself who underutilize the water, the 9,000 gallons that were charged automatically. As I said, my usage is, you know, a quarter or a half of what I'm charged every quarter. It seems to me, I'm sure you've read the stories lately in the newspaper that have come out, the data from the 2010 census, but there's more single-family homes, single-family households now than ever in the history of the census. So my situation is much more common than it's been in the past. The other factor, the demographic factor to consider is aging baby boomers like myself are not going to places like Florida and Phoenix and the Sun Belt anymore. More typically, we're aging in place. We're staying where we are and living there. I don't wanna feel as I get older and living here in the town of Elton that I can't afford to live here anymore because the rates are so high that it'll force me out of the town. And that's the way I'm looking at this, as I see these increasing rates and I look at the disparity between what I'm paying here and what the DC area is charging. It just doesn't make any sense. I don't understand why lowering the minimum take from 9,000 to 3,000, I think Mayor, you had proposed possibly last year, would raise the rates for families. As I look at the rate charge, the rate is the same. Whether you use three gallons or 30 gallons, it's still a per 1,000 gallon rate charge. So I don't understand why decreasing the minimum from nine to three would have an adverse effect on families. In conclusion, I believe that the clause inserted by Artesian in their contract that the town of Elton signed is an example of corporate greed at its very worst. The legal advisors to the town should never have let them sign this agreement. The mayor and town commissioners should have exercised much greater due diligence before signing this contract to understand how the triggering of this clause for forced water purchase would adversely affect the Elton residents. I strongly believe that the town needs to renegotiate this contract with Artesian and eliminate this offending clause, or alternatively, find a different source of water. The minimum usage requirements currently need to be pushed back from 9K to 3K because it's inherently discriminatory against older single residents like myself and because it's patently unfair to be charged two or three times more for water and sewer rates than you're actually using. Finally, I think it needs to be firmly established that no town official is or will benefit financially from this agreement with Artesian. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there any other one, anyone else that didn't sign in?
My name's Dave Willis. I live at 207 Wallant Lane, Elton, Maryland. As most of you know, I'm in the rental business. Been in it for over 35 years. I have a lot of senior citizens. I've been reading an article today in the Wall Street Journal, and maybe some of you saw it in the journal. The average social security check across the country is a little over $1,000. Well, let me tell you something. I know just about every penny that comes into some of my tenants, and they're far removed from $1,000. They're in the 700s, 690, 700. I have not raised rents five, six, seven years on a lot of these people. Some of these people get assistance from different things, some Section 8, a lot from family. So I'm looking at some kind of, not forgiveness, but maybe a proration of supposedly this big increase. Break it down to two years or three years. I know the month, the day, darn near the time when those water bills come in because my phone starts to ring at 7 o'clock. Mr. Willis, we just got the water bill. Can we half our rent this month? Can we quarter it? Now, I've explained to each tenant what's being proposed. It's out of line. I remember coming to a workshop here, and I try to make a lot of them due to the various businesses on me, and I can't make a lot of them. Mr. Piner sat up here one day when they were proposing this deal with Artesian, and he said, "You know something? Here's something I don't understand." And I give Mr. Piner credit for that. I chair the appeals board for Cecil County, Maryland, and we do special exceptions and variances. And I encourage all my members, don't let something get carried away if you don't know what we're talking about. Ask a question. If a question seems simple, so be it. Ask it. It might open the door for something else. I don't wanna get through the whole meeting and then we decide these cases and you say something, "You know, I didn't understand that." So I'm looking for you folks to give a little common sense and maybe prorate two years, three years, but not all at once. Thank you.
Another one, anybody else?
Yes, Carolyn Pearson, 250 Thomas Jefferson Terrace, Patriots, Glen, Elton, Maryland. My husband has a commercial shop building in Elton at 235 Bridge Street, and he's a painter and he keeps his ladders in there and a lawnmower, and he uses that building to where he washes his rollers and paintbrushes out and does some repair work in there. He has to pay for 9,000 gallons of water every three months, and, you know, he just runs a little bit of water to wash a paintbrush out and use a bathroom a couple times a month when he's in there. And we still have to pay the 9,000 gallons usage charge. And I would like to see you break it down to a lower minimum because we're just not using it, you know? That's my comment. Other than the fact that I think this suggested rate increase is just, it just leaves me speechless. You know, anyone can understand a 7% increase or even up to 10%, but this increase is just, you know, it's just hard to absorb it and understand it. It's just out of this world. I don't think people can cope with this kind of an increase.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
One question. On a public hearing, doesn't it have to be advertised two weeks prior to the public hearing in a newspaper?
I did that.
It's advertised one time.
The calendar is not required by law to advertise court orders of this nature. It's added out of courtesy to the public.
Well, I think you ought to table your decision and vote on it after you discuss what these people said.
We're not voting tonight. No. All right, then, this public hearing is now closed, but as we said, we will not be voting on this, and we appreciate all the comments that everybody had this evening, and we take all that in consideration before we make a decision. So, and then that time, when that comes about, then it will be advertised to let you know when it will be made. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The meeting's not adjourned. Anybody like to say we still have a meeting to conduct?
The meeting's not adjourned yet, and there will be comments made. Not sure whether anyone's clear of that, but what we wanted to do was open it up so the public can have their say. So I just wanna share that with you.
Rebecca, did I... Did you speak? Oh, we can let you speak. I'm gonna let you speak. Yes, I am. I think we're still here. The people are still here.
When you spoke at first.
Okay, Rebecca, you can speak.
Yeah, I have to shut my mouth.
No.
Yes, you did. Don't talk to me. Don't talk to me, Joe. I'm not talking to you either. My name's Rebecca McKinney. I've been with the town for years. I'm not the guy from the town. Mr. Hicks, Mr. Guinness, Earl Pioneer and Mary Jo have been very good to me, as I'm crying. I'm very upset. I signed in first. I'm the last ticket to speak. I done right. He calls whoever he wants and when he wants. Heck with me. I do more for this town than he's ever done.
Rebecca. Tom, come.
You don't care if I have water. What are you here for? Don't talk to me. I'm the second turtles. We're always hurt. The older people get hurt. We kick in the face. I can call Mr. Hicks, Mr. Guinness, Earl Piner and Mary Jo anytime. I think you kick in the face. Who else is talking to Louis, I'm talking to the wall. Steve, I'm talking to the wall. The mayor, I'm talking to the wall. Cheat or whatever you're calling, I'm talking to the wall. It's not fair for our water bills to be raised. I'm fixed income. I do what I can for this town. I do what I can for the children. I help with everything. Mr. Hicks knows it. I help with Big O, my billing. I do what I can. I'm getting tired. Every time I sign in, I'm kicked in the face and everybody else is called first. It's not fair. And Mary, you done me wrong tonight, and you kicked me in the face enough, and I'm tired of it. I sit up till 3:00 in the morning. I have a cab that takes me to Hollingworth Manor from 2:30 till 3:30. I watch all these houses, 153, 154, 139, 138, sell drugs. I watch what they do. Nothing's ever been done with it. I count Elton Police Department. I called the Sheriff's Department today. I spoke to a couple deputies. I'm facing my life. Y'all don't know this. I'm the one that's gonna get killed, not Elton, not none of you all, me. Because I'm sitting there watching them breaking these homes, sell drugs, and still pull a jack, skip, which y'all know. I'm doing this because of the seniors. My cousin gets 500 a month. He can barely make it without me helping him. Now I have to help with the water bill. Otherwise, he'd do without. It's not fair. 500 a month is not much money with no help with medical. He has no way of getting medical for his wife to have eye surgery that can't see now. No help. How can they help? It's Becky, which will help anybody and do anything for anybody. I don't care who you are and who she is or who he is. I don't care what color you are, because God put us here for a reason. He put us here to love people, care for people, and do for people. Evidently, as the mayor and Louis... The mayor doesn't care about that because they get big money. They set on it. Don't care about the water bills. Don't care about the sewer bill. If you ride around Hollingworth Manor, you see great big pools that fill every week. Don't want their water bill. They can't afford it. But what about us seniors? I'm on a fixed income. I can do without groceries to help my cousin, and I will do without something to eat because he can't afford to buy something to eat. He can't afford to eat. He can't afford to pay a water bill. It's okay for you all, especially you, Joe, as the mayor. You don't ride around in the manner. No, you don't. You can say you do, but you don't. I'm there day and night. I'll be back out there when I leave here. I'll walk home and I'll get a ride out there. If it's a cab. I was setting Archie's houses getting broken into. Evidently, you don't care, neither does Louis, and neither does the mayor or the lawyer. Evidently, you can find all you want, because all you care about is playing cards illegally. Whether you know it or not, it's illegal to play cards for money. Now, how you like that? It's not funny? It's not a joke? They do it. I like to name where they do it too.
Stick to the border situation.
The corner situation... I know you didn't like that because you're involved in it. They laughed on you. Okay. The corner situation is, I think it's ignorant, the way I was treated. I didn't get to say anything. It was first signed in, I was first here, and first thing signed in. I'm tired of being mistreated by you, Joe, by Louis. I'd save the copies, all paper, paper, and stuff that you don't even know about for Louis. And this is the way I get treated? This is nice of you. Very nice of you all making me upset and making me depressed. And thank you, Joe. And thank you, Louis. And thank you, boys. For treating me like a piece of dirt.
Okay. Any old business? None? Okay, anything I had?
I thought there was one concern, Earl, and you sent an email reminding us and making sure that the recreational center is going to be exclusively the ownership of the town whenever that's built. And I think Louis responded to that.
Yes, in the old business, we discussed in the last work session about recreation center. We had several, two sites that we were debating on what would be a good place for the center to be built. But if we were to go forward with this, we would have to make sure that we have another work session so we can include Ms. Mary McCall and Jeanie Mentor. So that we can get our pros and cons from the two different pieces of property. I had a chance to sit and talk to them twice since that I kind of took a second guess at the one piece of property that we were looking at. Because I had questions that, from the citizens, that came about later on after the meeting. So in order to do that, I would like to have another work session and talk about the pros and cons before we vote on that.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about the pros and cons, but I think your initial concern was the fact that the original plan we have is now obsolete. So we're gonna move forward. And what we have will be what we have.
Oh, yeah. The one planned site that we had was way too costly for the town to deal with. And the other thing was, if we don't have the money to build for us, we can't build for somebody else. So that's where the contract came into play. And it really was nonvoid because we can't afford a piece of property that we're building for someone else. We're trying to focus on the recreation center, the money that we have in the budget, so that it doesn't incur extra costs that we haven't already allocated.
So this property, we took a consensus on it, the one we're going with?
The property that we're talking about is the property on Route 40 by the sewer plant and one that we didn't really name because we don't want to put something in the paper and stir up the community and not really have all the facts on the other property. The one property we're talking about, we own it. We have hookups for water. We're looking at what we can use that won't cost us any extra money, but put it in a place that will probably be more usable for the citizens here in the town.
Right, what you're saying, we're not gonna partnership with the zoo, is the site on there?
Historical site.
Historical site.
In our work session, we talked about building a center as part of our, this business center as part of our plans from our prior plans. But that is not, that won't happen because we don't have the money to do that. So that's, we can't waste, I wouldn't say waste, can't use money to build something that we're not going to be using for recreation center. And that's basically what we're thinking. So as far as voting on it and doing anything to go further on this, we need to sit down in a work session so that we'll be clear as the board which one of these sites would be feasible and least costly for the town.
Okay, and that was kind of based on, we made the decision, and then some other points were brought up after that decision. And we need to bring that back to the table, right? Okay, I agree with that.
That decision was a decision, it was consensus that...
Well, consensus, you're right, consensus.
Yeah, but if you go back to all the plans, I guess what he was saying is that the recreation site was also going to be used as a visitor center. Since we are not using those plans now, the newer plans will not include the visitor center. But it's going to be exclusively the town of Upton and the park's recreation.
Right.
Right. We need to be on our accord with that.
We're only using the first, I believe, 10 acres that actually belongs to the town. That's our property at this time. That's what we're gonna use, the 10 acres, and that's it.
Right, Mary sent you a schematic or concept by email showing the 10 acres that we own, that she's going to be able to monopolize all the land and you won't have to incur any other property.
That'll be down the road if we...
Right.
Yeah, in the future.
Since we are looking at both these properties again, can we go as a group to see both? And here are the pros and cons there. The one property is back, I mean, one we can see, the other we really can't see. We have the drawings on it. But, you know, a lot of effort was put into that, and as you all know, I was for that property then. But I think if we could all see it and hear from Mary and Jean at the property, it would make more sense to the board to actually be able to vision the community center in those places.
Now, which property are you speaking of, Mary Jo?
The Meadow Park and the two that were in the paper that we had the consensus on.
No, I understand, but you said you were in favor of one at the beginning?
Well, when we had the consensus on in the workshop, you and I were in favor of the East Meadow Park.
Right, now, is that the one you're questioning about to go see?
That's what I'm speaking of. If we're all back on the table again, I'm not sure. The two, the two. Can we actually physically see the location?
That was one of the things that was proposed from Mary and Jeanie, that we as the board, if it came up tonight, would be suggested that we go visit the site, look at it, and find out the same pros and cons that they described to me today was, it wouldn't be feasible for that site, but in order for us to see it and they explain it, that's why I would like to include them in another work session, and maybe we can do that on that day.
So then, this is not the final plan then? We need to go back and do everything over again?
That's the final drawing for that site that is on Route 40. We can't draw up something that we're not gonna use if we all decide that we're not gonna use that other site. And we're not naming that because last time we named it, it stirred a big thing because it was in the paper. The owners didn't know that anything was happening with that property. And as a courtesy, I would like for them to know that that site is being looked at or talked about in a plan. So we haven't drawn a plan for that. I hope that makes sense. So the plan that we have to draw a site on is on Route 40 by the facility of a piece of property that we own. So there's no one can argue about something that we own if we draw a plan on that.
I really understand now. The plan that she drew given us, that was the site that the consensus was that for them to work with?
Yeah, that email that we received yesterday, how was that drawn up so quickly? I just...
I don't think it was drawn up quickly. It was just that you had 10 acres of land and you sketched...
I just took the part of the one that was done previously.
KCI drew this up for, this was done by KCI.
I know, but we just had the workshop Wednesday. I was curious.
Would you have to go back again?
Again, not to belong there. Let's just have another work session soon and discuss this that we already talked about because it was misconception of the last few minutes of the meeting. And it gave us second thoughts. So let's clear that up and go forward by our consensus to pick or choose those two sites and move forward. That's all that is.
Okay, considering the fact that you have water and sewer on one, and I believe the other you deny? Okay, just wanted to be sure.
Do it on the 9th of November at the next workshop. We can just put it on the agenda.
I'm okay with that.
With our budget, I don't know if you can find money, and I've mentioned it over and over, and Mary Jo talked about it too. Is it possible for us to come up with a scholarship for an Oktonian this year? Now, we're only talking about 500 to get started, minimal money, but as I said before, if you look through your budget, please, you know, give back to us and let us know. That's it.
The only thing I have is if I get a merchant to accept to have Halloween on October 31st during the town of Upton from 6 to 8.
So move.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
This is new business, right?
Well, our commissioners' time.
New business. Louis, I was wondering if, since we hired the new Public Works Director and we hired a civil engineer, have we used him to do any of our engineering needed as of yet? Yes. Do we plan to?
Yes. He's not, he can't do it now. He's organizing that department. He can't lead that department and go to another task he just leaves. He has a full menu for him.
When do you expect him to be able to start doing some engineering services?
I'll send an email to him tomorrow and ask him when he'll be available to assist in that function. And that's for now.
He's very organized. I would like to thank everyone who's left from the public hearing for showing up today. And we are listening to you, and we do need to set up a workshop to discuss everyone's comments and concerns. There were some great comments given to us tonight and concerns, and we live in town too, so we, you know, it's all of us that are gonna be affected. But I just want to thank you all for showing up, and I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, again, I want to thank everyone for coming for the comments that they've provided us with. I think we've got to do a better job in making it clear for the public what the public hearing is about. I mean, I know that I'm here to listen to the comments and try to digest everything you're saying. I don't have the answers for everyone, so I'm not gonna put myself in a position to try to answer questions that I don't know. So if you see me not trying to answer questions because I'm trying to be courteous enough to listen, and then, as Mr. Lissburg notes, if you call me, I will sit down and talk to you and answer your questions. But the thing is, trying to answer from the blue and not having the answers for the questions, it doesn't do nothing but make us look bad or worse. And it just makes us look like we don't know what we're doing. I don't have the answers for the water sewer rates, but the comments that I do know that was given today was nice comments about we can't afford the increase. And we as officials need to do whatever we can do to try to offset or try to set it where we can afford it. Because if you can't afford it, like I said, some of the people have mentioned that we're gonna get shut off, and then before you know it, it's just like a mortgage. You can't pay it, you're gonna lose your house or whatever. So my point I'm making right now, I'm making some comments, and I'm gonna get off here. There's things that maybe we as the board can look at, like the contract. I hear the issue about the contract being enforced because of the drought, the 375,000 gallons, paying that extra fee. Maybe somehow, through the finance or the board, we can come up with some kind of way to offset that extra cost that's over the 250,000, maybe long term. Even if it's a loan, I don't care. We need to sit down and try to do something because it affects me as well as it affects them and each one of us up at board. So that's the comment I would like to say as far as, we're not just saying those rates were given from the financial group based on what we're using. And their job is just to show what those rates and the costs will be. The 58 or 50 some percent, I don't agree with that either. I mean, there's got to be a way, because I'm a working person, that I can't afford an increase because I'm not on a fixed budget. But the thing is, I got all the bills. And so we hear your concerns. So when everyone was leaving, they thought everything was over. But the comments that you give, we listen to. We don't try to dispute everything you're saying and try to digest, I mean, break it down because then we'll be here all night trying to answer something that we don't know. But I do appreciate the comments. The other thing is, I know that a while back, I wanted to see if we could pay by usage. But if we do that, we would be, the word that Louis used, it would be against our policy to treat one way and the other. So there's senior citizens that should be hopefully getting a kickback if they're not using all this water, but we can't do for one if we can't do for the other. So all these things I'm saying, it's all bottled in my mind, but we want to look at what we can do to offset that triggered cost, that 375,000 gallons. And yes, I agree with you that in that contract, it should have reverted back to the usage of our regular cost. Somehow or another was missed, but it's already in the contract. We can't stop a contract and Artesian say, oh, you're, that's fine. We did talk about renegotiating that. So I just want to make sure that's clear. That's the first thing came up. Renegotiate the contract. If someone, like Mr. Lissburg said, someone's smart enough to know how the water works and we don't, then we're stuck with what we settled for. So I apologize for that, but we will look and see what we can do to offset, and that's what I'm hoping, offset that cost so it won't be a burden. Maybe, now, I shouldn't say what I'm gonna say, but anyway, maybe somehow or another we can keep the cost where it is and nobody will have to take that financial burden by themselves. Thank you.
I'd too like to thank the citizens for coming in for this hearing. Mr. Lissburg, I'd like to thank you for the research that you do. You know, you do make us think when you come up here. However, at this point, a contract has been signed with Artesian, so we have to go from this point on to figure out how we can wade through the water. Certainly, right now, we know that the economy is very fragile. And certainly, we don't want to burden people on fixed incomes, you know, with additional costs. So, you know, we have to take from here as a board and collectively come up with a decision that's going to be able to affect change, but not to the point of only hurting people's pockets. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Hicks?
I think a lot of it has already been said, but I certainly appreciate everyone's concerns about such a large increase at one time. But what we do need to make sure that we're looking at is down the road in the future. And where we're gonna end up if we don't take a serious look at the funds and how we're gonna capitalize what we need to make happen over the next few years in the budgets. So I think from the input that we're getting, we're gonna take a real good look, a hard look. The pass is the pass. The contract is done, over with. We need to move forward. We need to renegotiate, see any other options that we have, as we talked about, and do some due diligence and consideration of the comments that we have. So that's it for me.
As I said before, we are still waiting for the United Water to get back with us. It does take them time. They have to do a lot of figuring and looking at their figures and see how they can supply the water to us. But as soon as we find out and sit down and talk to them, there's a possibility that we may be able to work with them and maybe we can get from underneath this contract with Artesian. But we will try and look at everything. As they all said, we all work with you, and we all have the same thing. We all have to pay the same bills. We all get the same thing. So we all don't want to have to pay that big bill either. So we're gonna really try to see what we can find out, how to make this workable for everybody. Rebecca?
I would like to. I'm sorry, I've stopped because I'm very upset. And yes, I do have to thank, I would like to thank the Upton Police Department for helping me with breaking the air and assuming that we've had at Hollingworth Manor, they've done a wonderful job helping me. They sucked the plants I have told them. They didn't help me with it. And I would like to thank them all for helping me. Thank you all, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Becky. Charlie does have something.
David Gray, thanks for being present. I don't know why you're here, but there will not be speed humps along your street, so that makes you happy probably.
That does make me happy.
Okay.
Get my water rate straightened out.
Okay. And Bob Lissburg, another question. I think you were talking earlier in your comments, basically Bell Hill will not be able to negotiate for us if we go to United.
No, United. You're talking about...
No, I'm talking about the build, you know, the project that's going in that area.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Kenny Simmons, yeah.
Yeah, Kenny Simmons project, right, but however, the town has to negotiate for itself. I understand. Just make sure we're on the same page.
You skipped over, when you went down the comments, you skipped over your other things, I got a couple of things I would like to add, like did I make it on?
Yes.
When you're talking about your community center, has anybody done a cost study on this thing yet? What it's gonna cost to operate that per day basis, per week, per month, whatever, by the year?
It hasn't been done.
That hasn't been done yet. Now I hope you're not thinking about the past plans that you had that were presented several years ago? That's the most expensive way to build, and you got so much wasted space in that plan, it's ridiculous to even look at it. Several, oh, it's been several, several months ago. When the landlords were in here, they questioned, and Dwight Hare gave you a list of properties that some of them have been condemned and other ones need to be condemned. Mr. Willis has a lot of properties, he maintains his, and all the property owners that were in here maintain their properties. What has been done with the list that's been given to you three, four months ago? Nothing's been acted on it? The same properties look exactly the way they did then?
There has been some improvement, couple buyers out on Route 40 on one of the sites.
Well, I know, not the ones I'm referring to, I'm talking about the houses that, I know what you're saying, Earl, there's interest in selling that corner. But it's, if you look at the people that own these properties, you've got a couple attorneys and some person that's a banker in town. Now, Mr. Willis, he's in the real estate business, if his properties look like that, I'm sure that somebody would have come to bring him the task to make him repair his properties. I don't know who's not doing the job, but somebody in your town's not doing the job.
Well, you should be able to follow up with that through the code enforcement.
That's what I'm asking you guys to do. When you were a code enforcement officer, you did a good job, everybody liked you, I mean, you went to them and you corrected problems. You had no problems doing it, you did a good job. But it seems now, the last thing, oh, this guy's too busy, he's got a lot of work.
And I did suggest, we do need to somehow budget another code enforcement. There are too many properties in the town of Elkton that, and we definitely need to try and get another code enforcer.
Well, then, that's right, Louis, then we need to look into hiring someone else. He can't handle that and the other things either.
Well, he made a statement sitting right over here, he couldn't locate the people that owned them, all he's gotta do is go out to the state building and check the tax records. That's who owns them, that's very simple to do. If I had junk cars sitting in my yard and windows hanging out, I'm damn sure that somebody would come in there real quick and give me a citation. I would bet on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments?
Does Mr. George come with a volume control? Can we find a microphone for him?
We got one, this Louis.
Well, I don't have hearing aids yet, but it appears that I'm gonna have to buy some.
Ma'am, you're back?
As far as you brought up the code enforcer, my name's Carol Brosso, I'm at 704 Elkton Boulevard. I filed a complaint with the town of Elkton back in May for material being attached to my neighbor's fence, okay? To the height of six feet high fence, and then this material, okay? Turned all black and moldy and blowing in the wind, and dresser drawers up on top of the fence. I think Mr. George might have seen the pictures. In May is when I started my complaint. Photos were brought in, Mr. Smith looked at them. Mr. Trosel, after he was approached 30 or 45 days later to find out what was being done, was told there are sheets on a line, okay? So nobody got up out of their office to even drive down Elkton Boulevard to even see what I was talking about. They just sat there. So when I went and filed the next complaint, they said they were gonna do something, they went out and they took photos, okay? They went back to the town office, evidently they wrote the woman next door to me a letter that they had to be removed. They gave her 45 days, even though it only took her, she did it on Easter Sunday, and she did it on Mother's Day and one other day. The day that they were there, as soon as they left, she put up another section of sheets on the fence. She came back to the town and told the town that it was installation art, okay? So according to the town, that allowed her another 40 days to take it down, because she had the right to come and fight against this ordinance, okay? She didn't. She was given the time, they told her there was a deadline, they even filed charges at the courthouse, nine charges for each day that she didn't take the stuff down. When I emailed Mr. Trosel, what was the difference between the height limit of six feet on a fence and having her take down the material, but not having her take down the dresser drawers and all the other things she has nailed to her fence? He said, he didn't want to hear from me again, that there was no, he didn't want to hear from me about the 17 signs that are up and down the property line that say, "Don't cross property markers, don't touch the fence." I brought photos in of that. There's no sign ordinance on that either, okay? I just paid $900 to have trees put down, the privacy fence that she had put up, so I don't have to look at all these signs. There's nothing I can do about the property string marker that says, "Don't cross the property line," that the mail lady almost trips over every time she walks from her yard to mine. But the court date was yesterday, but it was dropped. I want to know why. Last year, she put broken windows up against her house, took 45 days for that to get removed. She didn't comply with that. That case was dropped. I want to know what's going on. And then she has Elkton Police Department officer in her house one day, okay? No car in sight. Whenever she calls the cops, they always pull out in front. This cop is inside her house, I come home from work, she has a sign that says, "Don't cross property line out on the curb that the town property owns." The cop comes barreling out of the house after she went out and put the sign back up. I said, "Will you stop with the signs already? My car keeps hitting it every time I back out of my driveway." The cop comes barreling out of the house at me, "Who do you think you are?" Telling her she can't put that sign there. I said, "It's not her property, it's the town's property." "Oh, you're gonna tell me it's the town's property?" He came down to the town, found out, yes, 24 feet from the corner of the house out is where our property line ends, from there to the street is town property, okay? Then she was told not to put these signs up, okay? I don't know what the woman's problem is, I know she has a problem. But every time I complain to the town and you drop the ball, okay, you sit there and say, "Oh, don't worry about it," and just give her another open door to do some more. Same thing. What's the difference between material being up on a fence or dresser drawers and birdhouses? I said to Mr. Trosel, so she has two sets of dresser drawers bolted to her fence, okay, that she's calling birdhouses, and then there's a birdhouse, another birdhouse, well, since all this has gone on, there's four more birdhouses and another set of dresser drawers on top of the fence. But that has nothing to do with the height ordinance anymore.
This is all out there right now?
All out there right now. Matter of fact, if you want to look at photos, I have it on my phone. And another sheet now is not attached to the fence, it's attached to the house, to a pole. My neighbors two doors down are tired of looking at it, the lady next door to me is 89 years old, she's too old to come and complain. But, you know, I just don't understand, what is, why is this followed through and then stopped? If she would be fined, maybe she would stop doing it, but every time she goes to the town and cries, okay, somebody feels sorry for her. She came to the town and cried that she didn't know where her property line was after she paid for a location survey, and has the pink flags and the string line right up and down the property line, from the front to the back, okay? With signs, every couple of feet, "Don't cross property marker line, don't touch the string." She has signs on her fence, "Don't touch the fence," okay? This is what I have to be, you know, that's what I look at every time I walk out my back door. If I don't walk back all the way in my yard, at least now when I walk in my back door, I see a beautiful line of trees, but if you walk down in between the trees, you can still see the signs flapping in the wind that she makes on her computer that blow in my driveway, she calls the cops every time. Go to the police department and ask them, how many times they've been called out to 706 Elkton Boulevard?
706.
And the harassment that I get every time she calls the cops for something stupid. Like the water, when I hose off my car and wash my car, ricocheting off the roof, she calls the cops because it touched her siding. Yeah.
Louis, we're gonna look into that.
You guys just stop it and just let her get away with it again. Had you taken the nine charges to court and fined her, maybe she'll stop what she's doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Yes.
All right, then, Becky?
Oh, we need to do something with Bill Scott, William Scott, for 153 and 154. The houses have gone in, I complained about him, I don't know how many times, nothing's being done, nothing ever gonna be done.
154, 153 Center, in Center Road, or?
Yes.
Center?
Yes, the road's empty. And since this grace, we opened the doors, I took the joke, it smells like, excuse me, dog crap.
Okay, we'll look into it.
The reason it smells like that is because 153 has 10 dogs.
Has anybody?
And then I did shit out back.
Has anybody called, like, the SPCA?
Yes, I have, in time. And I keep calling.
Good. All right, anybody else?
I'd like you to consider Mr. Nicholson for the position that's open on the Ethics Board. I'd like him to be considered.
Okay. All right, hearing nobody else, then I get a motion to adjourn the meeting.
That's a look.
Have a second? Any further discussion, all those in favor?